Welcome to Crosstalk. This is the Candidates 2021 Edition. And the purpose of these conversations is to help you better understand and know who the candidates are that are going to be on your ballot come May 15th, which is a Saturday. Usually it's the town elections in both Hanson and Whitman for the third Saturday of May. Joining us today, the conversation we're having is about school committee, the regional school committee, and we are joined by Fred Small. Mr. Small is a member, current member of the school committee seeking reelection. Fred, welcome to the conversation, sir.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you taking your time in WHCA for hosting this. Very much appreciated, and it's an opportunity to reach more people and get viewpoints across and people who have a chance to have a feeling of who I am. So, thank you.
For those who are new to town government or don't know who you are, maybe they don't follow what goes on in the school committee. Tell us a little bit about yourself, whether it's your role on the school committee or maybe prior services on committees or boards.
Sure. Well, I feel old here, but you know, let's go back into the Wayback Machine 20 something years. I was on the Recreation Commission. I did chair that. Sort of a funny story, when I did put my time to rest and resigned, the Board of Selectmen would not accept my resignation at the time. I even remember across the top of the express, "Board refuses to accept Small's resignation." That was a little bit flattering, so to speak. So, I did recreation. I was chair of that. I was also on the Friends of the Whitman Dare, back when we had the Dare program as opposed to the Drug Resistance and Education Program that we currently have. We just simply don't use the word dare, but had spent time on that committee. Matter of fact, my wife was one of the original members of that way, way back, when I believe it was former Chief Benton was the original Dare Officer. So, wow, back there. I did some time with the Finance Committee. I was also a member of the High School Feasibility Study Committee, and back then you had two. First, you had the feasibility study, and then you had the building committee. So, I was a member of the feasibility study committee and then a member of the building committee. Very proud of the high school that we built and some of the cutting edge at the time and still today ecological factors that we built in, such as the gray water tank. You know, people don't realize that all of the water from the roof drains into a very large tank underground, and that is what's used to flush our toilets. You know, so it's friendly to the environment as well as hopefully saves us a little bit of money on our water bill. So, did that. Then I was traveling around quite extensively for work. It took a few years, a step back out of the public eye, so to speak. In the past three terms, I've been on the school committee.
Folks, why are you seeking another term on the school committee? What is it that keeps you energized and wanting to continue to give or have public, you know, provide public service like this?
Some unfinished business. You know, there are a few goals that I had set for myself way back when that I really want to see through. Also, it seems like every year is a new challenge. Something else happens, that there's a new challenge in front of us. And I enjoy a challenge. I enjoy trying to problem solve. I enjoy, you know, seeing us get ahead, you know, or try to get ahead. You know, and as I said, there are so many unresolved goals that I really want to work toward seeing completed.
Let's talk achievements or initiatives. What are some of the, what are some of the achievements and initiatives that you've been able to lead during your time on the committee?
Jeez, I try not to, you know, pay attention to achievements, but, you know, bringing a budget home, that's very, very difficult in today's world. You know, getting people together, you know, trying to solve the problems. You know, understanding what the school committee is, because as a school committee member, as a person, I'm just a person. It's the committee as a whole. It's the committee that actually has the achievements, you know, not one person. You know, but at times, you know, we've lobbied very successfully, you know, to our state representatives and state senator, you know, as to the minimum per pupil expenditure that the state has. So, we've been able to raise that amount from the governor's budget of $20. I mean, heck, it happened almost in the back of a napkin at one of our budget meetings, you know, between Josh Cutler and Jeff Deal. They drew it up, $55 per pupil minimum increase, and by golly, it happened that year. And, you know, you say, geez, $55 is not much money, and it's not. But it was significant for us, you know, as far as that went.
Well, it was, it was significant, if I can interject, significant for what the state actually wanted to give per pupil, which I believe was a mere $20. So, to be able to have it increased by $35 was, was, was...
Yeah, more than doubled what the state wanted. And, you know, it's the little things. It's the little things that you try and think of, that you try and accomplish. Lobbying, you know, year after year after year for the increase in regional transportation. You know, fighting about that. I mean, there was at one time, you know, sitting on the committee, and the way the rules and regulations or the laws are written, that was supposed to be a 100% funded program or a funded mandate for regional transportation. Then the state added these nasty words called "subject to appropriation." We were seeing 64%, 65% reimbursement. You know, last year was in the 80s. This year, you know, we're pushing, 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 hoping that we can get it up higher than that, you know, from last year. So, you know, it's the little things that you can try and do behind the scenes, you know, that you can set up, and seeing every kid graduate. You know, seeing the kids come back to the district, you know, seeing, you know, my kids' friends and, you know, relatives, the kids' friends, and, you know, they're hearing about their experiences in college, hearing about their life experiences, you know, seeing what they've gone on to do. You know, we have, you know, graduates right now. They're in the cutting edge of research, of medical research. You know, they're in Boston and Cambridge. They're doing wonderful things that contribute to society and contribute to life. I don't know for a fact, who knows? Maybe they were working for Moderna, you know, and helped out with the vaccine or the development of the vaccine. But that's where we graduate from Whitman-Hanson. And it's, you know, that sense of accomplishment is really geared toward hearing their stories and their experiences.
The school budget assessment funding method continues to be a major issue. For those who may not know, what is your understanding of this situation? While there's no turning back, we're entering the second year of it. What is your assessment of it?
As far as the, I mean, you can break up our revenues in different ways. There are federal grants that we receive, Title I grants for very specific programs.
No, I'm talking about how it's assessed to the two communities.
Okay.
Where you, now it's more statutory, where it used to be per pupil. A recent forum held in Hanson, it was brought up again because the town of Hanson right now is realizing a $1.85 million deficit. And we know that the two towns, it was a major conversation last year when it came to putting together the fiscal '21 budget. And it seems as though there are still people who don't understand why things have changed for one community or the other.
Yeah, and, you know, I like to consider myself fairly well-versed when it comes to the differences between the statutory and the per pupil or alternative method, as it's called. And I knew nothing. I spent months looking for the formula at one time for the alternative method, and there is none. The alternative method is simply anything that's not statutory. Back in, when they did Ed reform back in the early 90s, they came out with the statutory method to determine what a budget should be. You know, especially when it came to regionals and what an assessment is. After so many years, and I want to say it was five or six years, you had districts complaining, saying, hey, we're not doing it that way, we're doing it this way. So, they allowed them to do it with an alternative method. When you do the formula, what it does is it takes into consideration the amount of Chapter 70 funds. And I'll quote Rob O'Donnell from DESI, who, when I made this statement, he said, "That's a very good way of saying it." When you perform the formula, you're taking and sort of assigning the Chapter 70 funds from where they were meant to go. In other words, DESI won't tell you, this is the amount for Whitman, this is the amount for Hanson. They pay the district. But made up within that formula is the amount they're paying for Whitman and the amount they're paying for Hanson. So, if you look at what the towns are spending per pupil, that's out of their pocket. But if you look at the overall and you break it out, they're virtually paying the same. It's just Whitman gets more state aid, so to speak. So, because they get more state aid, you break it out. And now, when you're performing that formula, you're taking the Chapter 70 monies out of the equation. Once you've taken those out and you've backfilled in your state aid, and you come up with a number, now the balance is split per the regional agreement, which is by population. So, that portion's still there. It's just a matter of how it's broken out and the way that they break it out is the easiest way to say it.
For those who haven't been following the process, what has this year's budget process been like for the regional school district? You know, it's, most times it's aiming for at least a level-funded budget. You can get a slight increase in assessments to each community to maybe provide more programs and be able to do more is, I would think, is a goal. But most times, it's what the communities can afford. Where do they stand this year in regards to affordability? And is there a possibility that because the two towns seem to be working on getting their financial houses in order, that it could be, it could spell reduced programs or cuts when it comes to teachers?
Well, in this, too, sir, and I think what you meant was level services.
Level services, yeah.
So, a level service budget gives us the same services that you had from one year to the next. Now, it's crazy. We're coming off of COVID. And, you know, the scary part is we don't know what additional services kids are going to need to catch back up to where they should be. There has been three separate federal programs. One was the original CARES Act, which was a godsend to us at the time because it supplied us with the ability to have our remote program. It supplied us with the ability to have some Chromebooks above and beyond what we had so that we could have devices go home while we're in full remote. So, we had that. Then you had what's known as ESER II. The ESER II monies, which were just over $1 million, of which $10,000 has to go to social and emotional programs. And those were allocated by the administration to go toward the remote program. Instead of throwing kids into an online atmosphere, we created our own Whitman-Hanson remote. So, kids were being taught by Whitman-Hanson people. And, you know, that's important, that feeling of community. Gosh knows, you know, what's going to be with what we put these kids through the past year. You know, it's just, it's unimaginable, you know, without sports, without seeing their friends, the feeling of isolation. Kids have been through a ton, and we've got to be cognizant of that. We are getting one more package right now of federal stimulus money. And I believe we still have about $300,000 left over in ESER II, or at least the last report that we got. It was about $300,000 that wasn't spent. These monies that we've recently been told we're getting should amount to somewhere around 2.1, 2.2 million. I've heard quotes of being maybe even a little bit higher than that. We can spend those over the next three years. When they prepared the budget, the administration presented to the school committee what they felt they needed, okay? There were some special ed classes, some bright programs that the district wanted within the budget they felt that was imperative that they had. You also have to face the financial realities that the state makes up 47%, 48%, 49% of our budget. The revenues from the state grow at less than half a percent. Our two towns, when we're assessing them, they can't afford a, you know, 3%, 4%, 5% increase of the budget to be borne almost completely on their backs. You know, Proposition 2.5 limits how much they can raise taxes. You know, for the town of Whitman, and I know the number is just that much better, you have about $1 million available between new growth and an extra levy capacity. Town of Whitman has made a commitment within their financial blueprint to increase our budget or the assessment that they receive by about 5% annually. And that's on the high side. They prefer it lower, but that's what they say they can afford within their budget. That equates to about a $760,000 increase this year. I mean, that's 76% of the new monies that they're able to bring in. That leaves them 24% to cover increased utility costs, raises to their own, you know, fire police, DPW, library, town hall workers. You know, that leaves them a very short amount of money to be able to do everything that they need to do. Plus, you know, still capital projects. You know, we have, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, it's somewhere north of, I believe, $300,000 in capital projects we're asking the town for. You know, so my opinion is the town's doing everything they can within their available funds to take care of us. And, you know, our administration and working with what the resources are from the towns made a decision. We had certified one budget. We went back into it last week, and we were able to identify some areas that we can use some of that federal money and bring out these other programs. And other than one science teacher, it is a level services budget.
And if I could stop you, so for folks who may not, may not understand budget lingo, the difference between level funded and level services is?
Sure. Level services, again, is the same services that we had the year before. Level funded means if you, if it costs $100 last year, it costs $100 this year, period. You know, we have contractual obligations. We have bus contracts. We have trash contracts. We have cleaning contracts. You know, unfortunately, in today's world, prices go up.
I have to ask you, it's an interesting scenario between not only the two communities, but also the school itself. I believe that a new individual was hired by the regional school district as of the past couple of weeks. So, happens to be John Stanbrook, who was the Hanson town administrator. He now is on board with the school district. You have a new, you have an interim town administrator in Hanson and a new town administrator, fairly new, in Whitman. How does this play out and what are your concerns as a school committee member? Your concerns and do you have any confidence in the process with, with new folks being integrated into the process?
We've been living without a full-time business manager for over a year now. Approximately a year ago, we wanted to hire a new business manager. The district advertised and selected the best candidates for a review committee. And I happen to have been on that committee. And nobody that interviewed was really worthy of offering the position too. You know, so it was looking like we'd go back to the drawing board. The administration said, "Well, we do a Plan B. We can, you know, keep Mr. Tuffy, who's very capable and competent, you know, on a part-time basis over the next year until we can find somebody else." And that was the road that we chose to go down, you know, especially with the COVID road happening and all the uncertainty. This year, the district put that out in, I believe it was school spring and perhaps another one or two publications advertising the position. People applied, and they whittled it down to the four best finalists. Mr. Stanbrook was one of those finalists. We received the applications, you know, a few days before, two days before his interview. And I must say that if you read his biography, you look at his resume, and then you speak with him, you realize how capable and competent he is. You know, as far as him working for, you know, the town of Hanson, I can see where that could cause ruffled feathers. But at the same time, having the knowledge in my mind, he was leaving no matter what. He was not happy there. So, he didn't leave because we had a position open and hired him. He was leaving because he was not happy. And he was the best qualified candidate that we could obtain. We need to look out, you know, for our own actions. Nobody forced him to apply for the position. He did that on his own free will. That's my viewpoint of it. I don't believe he would have a conflict with anything. He's, in my opinion, far too professional for that. There's an interim town manager or town administrator over in Hanson now that had come from Whitman, who is a fantastic individual. You know, I happen to, you know, think very highly of her. And once again, I don't think that she would let anything personal. You know, and through her years here in Whitman, you know, in our conversations, I know how she values education. You know, so, you know, granted, her first, you know, her first allegiance definitively will be toward her Board of Selectmen in the town of Hanson. But, you know, I also know, you know, that when we speak, it's going to be a collaboration. You know, as far as, you know, the new Whitman town administrator, the more I talk to the gentleman, the more impressed I am. You know, I happen to serve also on the Capitol Building Capital Expenditures Committee. I think that's the official title, the BCEC. I serve on that, and Mr. Heinemann's on that as well. And when you speak with him and you understand his way of attacking something and looking at something, sometimes it's a little bit different, and you have to take a step back and understand. You know, the one thing I try to pride myself on is looking at a situation, not only from my viewpoint, but trying to look at it from others. You know, and that's what you get with him. He's a brilliant guy who has seen a few different ways of skinning a cat, so to speak. And, you know, it, I think he's going to be a very, very large positive for the town of Whitman. The one thing I've said at our recent school committee meetings, and whether I'm there or not, I'm hopefully going to get reelected. But I really want to see a subcommittee of interested parties be able to sit down, be able for the school committee in the district to lay out the strategic plan, what needs to be implemented and when, what the associated costs are going to be. And I have faith in our town. I have faith in the voters. I have faith that people want to see our children succeed. It's a social obligation. I went to school, you went to school. And it was paid for by people, our predecessors, so to speak. You know, we have an obligation to educate the next generation and to do it properly and to do it to the absolute best of our abilities. If we can show a very clear need, I believe that people will rally behind us, give us the tools, give us the programs, and we have to show that we're not wasting money. You know, it's, it's got to show the need, not the want, and it has to show no waste.
Just want to, just want to interject here. We just got a few more minutes left.
Okay.
In this conversation, you've given a lot of, a lot of depth with your answers to the questions that have been posed to you. So, your answers from here on out are going to be a little bit more. I'll try to make sure I ask you questions that don't need such depth. Unfortunately, there are a couple that are very important. But you talk about departure. There has been, there has been a conversation about possibly seeing the school district being deregionalized. Can you briefly give me your thoughts on, on that scenario and your concerns about a possibility of one community leaving the partnership?
It has been a tradition that has been Whitman-Hanson for a long, long time. You know, while it works for both towns, I think that it's something that we need to keep pursuing and keep, you know, keep intact. The folks in Hanson, I'm pretty sure their motivating factor is the almighty dollar. And if they do a study and they see exactly how much it will cost them to leave, I think that they would do a 180 pretty quick, that they wouldn't want to leave the district. You know, that being said, I am hopeful that they will continue to support education. Because I don't think Whitman has any intention or any want to go anywhere. The only thing I could see is if education can't be supported and you have one town wanting to move forward and another town not wanting to, and continually stopping that, that that could be, you know, the crisis, so to speak. I am hopeful and prayful that everything goes okay at their town meeting and subsequently at their ballot box. They're facing a very large override. And, you know, they scream and yell about the school budget increasing so... And, you know, this, they scream and yell about the school budget increasing so much. Part of it was Whitman's kindness last year. All right, they're looking, $500,000 of that was the fact that Whitman helped them last year. So now they have to come up with those monies themselves. The district took money out of their E and D last year. You know, the 40% that was allocated toward Hanson, there's another level that they need to come, you know, themselves toward. You know, if they can be able to survive this year, obtain the funds that they need, I'm hoping that they can thrive and prosper. Because nobody wants to see any harm done. And hopefully as the district, we've done what we can, you know, to help them achieve their goals. Because it's a partnership, all three, all three of us.
Anything that we haven't taken time to talk about, but that you'd like to take a moment to, to discuss?
Just to thank people, you know, thank them for their involvement. You know, it is, it's not easy sometimes. We're volunteers. And, you know, there have been times I picked up the phone and had to hold it away from my ear because I've got someone yelling and screaming at me. You know, it's gotten easier over the years, knowing how to navigate those waters and how to handle things. But, you know, it's never nice to get yelled at. But for the majority, you know, when people pick up the phone and they call and they say, thank you. Or you get that little quick email that someone says, thank you, appreciate you, you know, speaking up about this or that. And I'd like to ask the voters, you know, I've been, you know, around for nine years, seeking another term. As I said, I do have some unfinished business. I'd like to see that business through and I'd like to see it come to fruition. You know, there are some things that people will say, you, this hasn't been done or that hasn't been done. And we've tried to accomplish it and we still try. And hopefully in the next few years, some of the items that we haven't been able to accomplish will be able to have been accomplished. You know, so I'd like to ask everyone for their vote. I very much appreciate the support I've received in years past. And I would hopefully like to continue on for another three years.
If folks want to find out more about your campaign, they want to reach out to you, they want to talk about the issues, how can they do that?
Real simple, 781-523-1900. You dial my number and I'll say it again before we go. Push one for Fred. It rings every phone I own. So, you know, I try to consider myself to be accessible. If you want to talk on the phone, if you're comfortable enough to go meet for a cup of coffee, you want to stand on one side of my truck and I stand on the other, you know, and we sit and enjoy a hot beverage and, you know, good, bad or indifferent, I'd like to hear about it. I started this as, you know, something to give back. You know, that's the way my uncle had taught me, you know, you always try and give back. His slogan, think big, vote small, you know, back from the 60s. I just want to try and make Whitman a better place. That's all.
Well, thank you for joining us today, Fred.
I appreciate your time, Kevin. You know, can't thank you enough for everything that you do, your time, your efforts. You know, you've been fantastic as always.
And you've been tuned into another cross talk. This is a 2021 candidates conversation. And today we've been speaking with Fred Small. If you do not know anything in regards to voting in town, whether you're, whether you are registered to vote, where to vote, whether you're in Whitman or Hanson, contact your town clerk and they will guide you as to what you need to do, what steps to take, whether it's this election or future elections. If you don't know where to go to vote, they'll give you that information. More conversations coming up. Stay tuned. You are tuned into Cross Talk. Thank you for joining us.